Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom. We'll log and call in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call, but also go into the township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meetings, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by a chairman who would be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be clearly heard. During the meeting, both those present and online, only one person speaks at a time, and they must be recognized by the chairman. Many people speak at the same time combined with background noise makes meetings like this impossible to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to utilize the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized as the chat function, you must either be a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner of East Hemphill Township, who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak on utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by a chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order, and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call votes, ensuring all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will refer to staff and be handled at a later meeting. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for me meant purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendants. Comments limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda I am being discussed, with the exception of the public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during the public comment period for non-agenda items. With all issues, refer to staff. We thank you for your patience, and now we'll move on to our first item on the agenda. Please rise for a moment, I'm signing the pledge. Now the pledge.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. First, for our business, we have tonight is a conditional use hearing. It's for the 1600 Cloister Drive. I request for billboard placement. And with this, I will turn it over to our solicitor to assist with running the meeting.
Okay. Good evening. So this is a hearing that is going to be held by the Board of Supervisors. The notice for tonight's hearing has been advertised. We're going to start by having the applicant come forward and have their witnesses sworn in. They will then proceed with presenting their case in the form of testimony or exhibits or both. When the applicant has done presenting their case, then they will be subject to questions from members of the board and from anyone in the audience who is interested in the application. And we'll continue through that process. If there's any party objectors, they will also have an opportunity to present their case. If there's anyone participating by Zoom in this hearing, because it is a hearing, we will ask you to turn on your camera as well as your microphone prior to making any statement. And we will ask that you be identify yourself and be sworn in prior to making your statement. When all the testimony's been completed tonight, the board may consider closing the hearing and voting upon the decision. You have 45 days to render your decision after the close of the hearing.
Okay. Is there somebody from the applicant? Please come forward.
Good evening. Claudia Shankoff, McNeese, Wallace and Newark. So have Devin Wagner, who is the president of Oak Tree. If we want to have him sworn in, I'll start by handing out. All right. So the exhibits that I've handed out, I've marked these collectively as applicant's exhibit one. If you turn to the first tab, Tab A in that packet of exhibits, you'll see a copy of the site plan for this proposed billboard. The proposal is to place a single-sided LED billboard on a 12.1 acre property that's located north of 283. The address for that property is 1600 Cloister Drive. The property is in the township's enterprise zoning district, where billboards are permitted by conditional use. The property's improved with a large commercial building, which has a mix of warehouse and medical office uses. The applicant, which is Oak Tree Outdoor Advertising LP, has a lease with the owner of the property to construct a billboard there. I will note, I have a copy of the lease, which I've marked. I'll give a copy to your solicitor, certainly if any board members are interested in reviewing it. I have other copies here as well. I will note the lease is redacted in terms of some of the pricing information, and that the lease indicates that a two-faced billboard can be placed on the property. We're simply proposing one billboard face. So with that, by way of background, I will have Mr. Wagner testify in some more detail about the proposed billboard. So first, Devin, could you please explain how you selected the site for placement of a billboard as well as the placement of the billboard within the site?
The site was chosen specifically because it met the requirements of the ordinance to erect the billboard as also because it's on Route 283, which is a major artery through Lancaster County. So it's desired by a lot of advertisers.
So I'm going to walk you through the conditional use criteria and the ordinance sort of step by step in your testimony. So one of the criteria is that there cannot be a billboard within 1,000 feet of another billboard. Was this evaluated as part of selecting the site and the placement? And can you explain that evaluation process to the board?
Yes, it was, and it's one of the check marks that have to be checked where to build outside of 1,000 feet from any other billboards. There is one currently built billboard to the east on Roarstown Road, and then there is a to-be-built billboard to the west on Route 283. I believe it's about 1,350.
Can we have you just stand a little closer to the microphone? Yeah, because the people online are not going to hear a word you're saying right now.
So also in the site plan, there is a blue, light blue circle around the billboard. Does that represent a 1,000-foot radius from the billboard?
It does.
And you've marked on the site plan the other existing and proposed billboards that you spoke about on Roarstown Road and Dairy Road.
That is correct.
And obviously, those are outside that circle.
They are.
Is the billboard set back at least 50 feet from the side and rear property yard lines?
All those setbacks.
And in terms of setback from the right-of-way, is the board setback at least 35 feet from Cloister Drive?
As noted, it is setback 35.
Is the board within 1,000 feet of a residential zoning district?
It is not.
Explain placement of the board in terms of making sure that it doesn't obstruct the view of the business on the property, or any adjoining businesses, or of motorists traveling on either Cloister Drive or Route 283.
The position of board is based in, it's an open grassy area that sets off to what would be the east of the entrances to the businesses that are running out of that location.
Could you turn to Tab B in your packet? Copy of the electrical plan that was prepared for this billboard?
It is.
Does that show the dimensions of the billboard?
Yes, it does.
So what is the proposed dimension for the face of the billboard as well as the proposed height?
The billboard size, the face of the board is 10 feet by 30 feet, 300 square feet, which falls within the ordinance. And the proposed height is to be 35 feet in height.
And it's proposed to be a single-sided billboard, correct?
Single-sided billboard facing west to read the eastbound traffic.
In terms of the height, there's a 25-foot maximum height permissible under the ordinance for a billboard. Can you explain to the board why the additional 10 feet would be necessary here?
Additional 10 feet would give visibility by traffic traveling east on Route 283. And based on the height that will sit nicely on the property and actually be safer for any traffic that's driving by, because it's going to be highly visible to them.
Can you explain a little bit about the challenges that we faced in terms of the setback from Cloister Drive versus the setback from 283, just given the configuration of this site?
Yeah, based on having Cloister Drive come through there, the board is obviously set back further off the roadway than what typically you would look for. But based off of the position of the board on the lot and how traffic flows on that artery with additional height, I think the visibility would be great traveling eastbound.
So the additional height is necessary in part because this is setback substantially more than 35 feet from 283?
Correct.
Explain how maintenance of the lot where the billboard is located, as well as the area surrounding the billboard, will be provided for.
The lot is all, is currently being maintained and will continue to be maintained. There's obviously tenants in there, medical as well as, I think, light industrial. The billboard structure is simply a steel structure that is painted and is maintained regularly. And then it would just be a matter of any regular maintenance for the digital display. But a lot of that actually can be done remotely by way of the internet.
And your lease, in fact, would require you to maintain the area where the billboard is located in a clean, sightly condition. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in addition, we're submitting proposed conditions of approval along with this application. Would those conditions require you to submit a maintenance plan to the township?
Yes, they would.
I'm going to ask you to turn to Tab C in your packet. Is this a copy of the light study that was prepared for the proposed billboard? Can you briefly explain to the board the results of the lighting study?
Basically, the digital billboard does not emit any more than .3-foot candles at all. And if you actually look at the graph there, at the different viewing distances as well as angles, no, no time is it above .3-foot candles.
So there's a requirement that at the lot line, the billboard cannot emit more than .3-foot candles of light above the ambient light level, correct?
That is correct.
And this study demonstrates that, in fact, it will not.
Correct.
In terms of frequency of message change on the billboard, what's the industry standard?
Industry standard is eight to 10 seconds. Pen Dodd is actually, permits it to change every five seconds.
And it's your understanding that the township's ordinance allows the message to change once every hour?
That is correct.
If the conditional use application is approved this evening, in addition to seeking the variance for the additional 10 feet in height, would you also be seeking a variance to change the message on the sign more frequently?
Yes, I would.
And how frequently would you be proposing to change the message?
The 20 seconds, to change every 20 seconds.
Is that consistent with the relief that the zoning hearing board granted for the billboard that's located on Dairy Road?
It is. Yes, it is.
Will the sign display any animated messages or other special effects?
No, it will not.
Will the billboard emit any sound?
No.
Will each advertisement be self-contained, in other words, not sequential messages on the board?
Correct.
And does the board have a default mechanism that would allow it to revert to a blank screen if there was a malfunction?
Yes, it does.
Could you please turn to Tab D in your packet? Is that a copy of the proposed conditions of approval that you're submitting for the board to impose this evening if they look favorably on this application?
Yes, it is.
And I'm just going to go through those conditions briefly. So the first condition is that the zoning hearing board could permit the billboard to be up to 35 feet in height, or the message to change once every 20 seconds without additional modification of the decision. Any relief more significant than that would require modification of this decision. The second criteria is that the applicant would submit an as-built plan once the billboard's installed, showing the elevation and demonstrating that the billboard complied with the lighting requirement, as well as met setbacks. The third is that the applicant would provide the township with a maintenance plan for the area around the billboard. The fourth condition is that the applicant would make the billboard available for amber alerts, silver alerts, blue alerts, and similar safety messages in a manner and for periods of time which are consistent with industry standards. The fifth condition is that the applicant will provide the Pennsylvania State Police and East Hemphill Township Police, as well as other law enforcement agencies having jurisdiction, current contact information for the applicant for the use of safety messages, and to enable the appropriate person to be contacted if needed. And then finally, condition number six is that the applicant would adhere to East Hemphill Township zoning ordinance requirements and regulations, except as modified by zoning hearing board approval. Is the applicant agreeable to all of those conditions?
Yes.
And I will note, for the benefit of the board, this is a combination of the conditions that were previously imposed for the Dairy Road billboard, as well as some additional conditions that the zoning hearing board imposed on that billboard as well. We don't have any additional testimony this evening, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions, gentlemen?
None for me.
None?
Got a couple. Number one. Do you have a number of billboards in the area?
Yes.
And Dairy Road is one of them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What would you say is the optimal amount of this type of billboard advertising for the area?
As far as the number of billboard structures in Lancaster County?
Do you have any, put another way, do you have any other plans for any additional billboards at this time?
Throughout Lancaster County?
No, in East Hemphill.
East Hemphill, not at this time.
Okay. Do you, will the installation of this billboard create any jobs in the township? Permanent jobs?
Not, maybe not specifically in the township, because my business is based in Mannheim Township, but we've created a bunch of jobs over the past.
And only because I don't know. Does a billboard pay property tax?
It does not.
It does not? Okay, interesting. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
So we ask party status or what's?
Do you want to open up, see if anybody has any questions or comments, or wishes to make a statement?
We will open this up at this point. Anybody who has any questions or comments? Anybody who wants to make a statement? We'll start with people in the room. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Garber, anybody on Zoom?
No one at this time.
Okay. It doesn't look like there's any public comment. So I guess, Mr. Bennett, you got any more comments at this point?
Just one more. Applicant is aware that we are in the process here of revising our ordinance as it pertains to billboards in the township, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is this, look like there's any board comments? Any comments from the applicant at this point?
No additional testimony. I would just ask that our exhibits be admitted.
Okay, we'll accept your exhibit, so. So seeing no more comment, I guess the next step will be to close the hearing at this point?
Correct.
So entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Okay, motion, Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the ayes have it, four to nothing. So with that, we now have a decision too, that whether we can take action on it or at this time, or wait at this time of list.
Correct. You can either, you can have discussion now and render a decision tonight. You could render a decision at a future meeting. You have 45 days from tonight to render your decision.
Okay. What's the will of the board at this point?
I have no problem voting tonight.
Ms. Weaver?
I have no problem tonight. I'm okay waiting if anyone has concerns, but I would be willing to go forward tonight.
Mr. Bennett?
I'll leave it to the will of the board. I am concerned that we didn't receive staff's recommendation or the electrical recommendation on this project until today, right before the meeting. So I really haven't had, had any time to review it. So having said that, whatever you feel is appropriate is fine with me.
What's your timing, if you don't mind me asking?
As far as timeframe is billed?
No, your timing right now. How critical would it be to have an action tonight versus the next meeting?
I prefer, whether to have an answer tonight if possible.
Okay, because our next meeting is not to, the third week of July. We do not meet on the week of the fourth, so we are a month out.
Well, I just would note that even if we do receive approval, that's sort of not the end of the road for us, because we'd still have to go to the zoning hearing board yet afterwards as well.
So I will look at the board here at this point.
I'm fine with taking action tonight. If that, is that still the question?
Yeah, it's still the question at this point. Mr. Weaver? Put you back on the spot.
It'd be nice if we had a meeting in two weeks, but actually, it's five weeks, I believe, until the next meeting, which is a bit long. I would tend to, we do have a member of the board who has some concerns. We don't know what Mr. LaFever might need some time, so I would think that we could, I would like to leave it till the next meeting.
Now, keep in mind, Mr. LaFever's not here. So unless the applicant agrees that he can read the testimony, he can't participate in the decision.
He doesn't get us to say that?
Right. The other option we have is we can adjourn for a brief executive session and have a discussion.
I do agree with Mr. Bennett's perspective of stuff coming late. That is one thing I do agree with. That's something that always drives me a little crazy too. I'm comfortable with the application, but I can understand the concern too.
We meet quickly in an executive session. It'll take two minutes.
So right now it is 7:24 by my computer clock,
Did it? Thank you.
Okay, it's uh, seven thirty-one. We'll reconvene our meeting from the executive session and from now with uh, this matter before us, at this point I will entertain a motion to get the exact words here. My paper all messed up. So we're looking at a motion to approve the conditional use for the digital billboard at sixteen hundred Cloister Drive, subject to all the conditions that have been discussed. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth?
Second.
Second, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
No.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the dice have it three to nothing. Thank you. Or three one, I'm sorry. Now we'll move on to our regular items on our agenda. The first item is the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. And with that, we'll open up the consent agenda to the board. Anything, guys?
I got nothing.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Russell, you may want to recuse yourself from that vote for the invoices.
Okay, thank you. So, second from the board, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
You're all second motion.
That's second still second, but we're good.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Epstein. So the dice have it three with land extension. Next up, we'll move on to our action items and the first action item is under development services and the sheet sketch plan and land development waiver request for thirteen thirty-one oh one Columbia Avenue to approve the land development waiver. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you gentlemen, tonight is a sketch plan and an application waiver request for the waiver of land development. Diane, could you bring up the sheets presentation, please? While Diane is assisting us and bringing that up, um, Sheets is planning on doing a remodel for their store number three thirty-eight, which is at the corner of Centerville Road and Columbia Avenue. They are um, asking for a waiver of land development and it's due to the limited scope of the project. The project is proposing a um, addition of seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. That addition is over already existing impervious area. They will be doing some site regrading and that is limited to the areas that are surrounding the building. And that is to accommodate the building addition and to upgrade the sheets to meet ADA requirements. There will be an overall decrease in impervious area of three hundred and thirty-two square feet. The site is actually constructed um, from an approved land development plan in two thousand and six. And Sheets is simply updating their store to meet current requirements and current um, general standards that Sheets has for their stores. The site does have stormwater facilities um, in um, cooperation with the township, uh, a financial security escrow reduction was approved at the June second meeting. DMA has done an uh, a re- uh, a review and an inspection of where the stormwater facilities. And Sheets has supplied a stormwater management report to show that the stormwater facilities are adequately designed and um, implemented to accommodate the existing impervious and um, the um, proposed improvements which result in a decrease of three hundred and thirty-two square feet. So no new stormwater improvements will be uh, needed or required. And um, they will be updating paved, paved areas. They will be restriping. Uh, they will have a total of fifty-four parking spaces. And they will, um, right now the site plan shows two ADA parking spaces, but after discussion with the building code official Steve Bramble and with a discussion with um, Ms. Terry Dello and Mr. Steve Lynch, uh, the site plan will be updated to show that there will be a third ADA um, space. Only one of those ADA spaces needs to be van accessible. With that being said, um, Terry Dello and Steve Lynch are here representing the request. If the board has any questions, but due to the limited scope of the project, um, staff recommends that the board um, approve the waiver of land development. Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything more to offer at this point? Which is fine if you don't. Okay, any questions of the board at this point? This is a very routine request. It's not land development. It's basically just a site modification at this point. Um, we do have a uh, a motion and I'd like to actually discuss modifying it a little bit. So I'm gonna read the uh, motion and what I want to modify. So the motion's to approve the land development waiver for Sheets number three three eight project township file twenty-one dash ninety-three point zero two at thirty-one oh one Columbia Avenue as presented, subject to the applicant providing a fee in lieu of contributions equivalent to the land development plan application for fee for both the preliminary plan and final plan and recording an as-built plan period. Um, so we had on there the additional comment, adding a note on the as-built plan, any future land development activity shall require a recording of an approved final land development plan. We should just take that up and the case by case, when the next one comes back for, for us, either it meets the requirements for one or it doesn't. So we don't need to have that. I don't, I think that note doesn't really need to be here. If you can make the case again, that's more of a maintenance activity or something that is worthy of a waiver, we'll entertain it again. That would be my opinion, so how's everybody feel about that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so that is actually then the motion. So do I hear, hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it. Thank you and thanks for everything you guys do for our community. Next up, we have, here. Nathaniel Sturgis, appointment as zoning officer for the township. Ms. Switzer?
This is really just a formality. Uh, should he take any cases to court, he should be appointed officially as our zoning officer. He has been doing the job since June seventh, which was at the point in time that Colin Seesholz has left.
And he's happy at this point?
I believe he is.
Yes, he is.
We're excited to have him take on this new role. It's good.
He's busy.
His professional development, I'm sure he is actually busy. So any discussion in the board? Casey, none. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Nathaniel Sturgis as a zoning officer for East Hemphill Township.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uh, Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it four to one, or four to nothing, I'm sorry. Next up, we have the Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance Growing Greener Grants submission for the Little Conestoga Stream Restoration between Marietta and Columbia, which involves a visual assessment feasibility summary and there's also a staff memo. Ms. Switzer?
Yes, so we have two of these tonight and hopefully I don't get them confused because they're very similar in name and location. Diane, if you could put up the first one for the Lancaster Con- Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance. Mark Huber is in the audience. He represents the alliance. He brought this to the board uh, for consideration. This is a very much a grassroots effort. Ruth Beck is also on Zoom. She is a resident Lancaster township. And she really uh, spearheaded this project, got the Watershed Alliance interested in it. It is a stream bank restoration, no trail system, running generally from Marietta, just short of Marietta Avenue to Columbia. They haven't really defined the scope, I don't believe yet, but they are seeking a growing greener grant, which the deadline for submission is June twenty-second. You also have in your packet a um, support letter from them in addition to a landowner commitment letter. The landowner commitment letter is for the Wheatland Hills Park area. That's along the Little Conestoga. And then the support letter is to accompany the grant when it gets submitted. As part of the grant, as part of the support letter, uh, the alliance and the homeowners on both sides of the, the creek are looking for the fifteen percent match requirement for the growing greener grant. And I believe I provided some options to um, the MS four committee to consider, since this was such a quick turnaround, we have not had a chance to meet about it.
So what does our MS four team have to say about this? I'm sorry. Me putting you guys on the spot, what, what does our MS four working group have to say about this?
If you want to think about it, I, I will share with you that the alliance has uh, footed the bill for the design and the, the background information. So they have covered that cost to date.
Personally, I'm in favor of, of all these kinds of projects. A great thing and I guess the township gets some credits for this too, or not?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be credits. What those look like, we don't know yet, uh, until it's designed and engineered. This would be for design and permitting, not construction. And this is, seems to be the focus of the growing greener grants with this uh, grant cycle.
As far as the um, the uh, percent towards the required matching funds, I, I have no idea what that amount should be. I I don't know if we've had projects before I was on the board where, where this came up. Has, is there any precedent?
Unfortunately, we've never had one that we shared borders with. So we have, we have three groups. We have ourselves, we have Lancaster township, and then we have the property owners. I, I know Mr. Huber met with Lancaster township. They expressed support, but I think fell short of actually committing any funds at this point. Mr. Huber, if I could have you.
You have to come forward so we could hear you on Zoom. There you go.
Uh, Mark, uh, Mark Huber with the Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance. I'm the secretary treasurer of that group. And yeah, we, we've um, met with um, both Cindy and John and appreciated their time. I think East Hemphill has maybe a little more uh, stake in this because they actually are a landowner in this project, whereas Lancaster township is not actually on land. Um, but we did approach them and um, didn't get a letter of support, but um, at this point no financial backing.
We just, oh, go ahead.
If I look at the, the match, essentially you're anticipating the match to be between ten and fifteen thousand.
That, that's correct. The reason we don't have a exact number is we're still the, the, so again, this is for design and permitting, so depending on the size of the project will determine what the cost is and we're still rounding up letters of intent from the landowners, of yourself and different landowners. And depending on how big that is, it could be, we're estimating anywhere from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand for design and permitting.
What's the rough idea for cost for construction? Do you have a rough idea for that?
No, we don't because again, the um, number one, we don't know the size of it yet and also there's, the approach that we're probably gonna go with is um, it's, if, if, I don't know, did you all?
They got what we got, yes.
Okay. It's option one B, which is um, do um, bank, uh, create a wetland bench and bank rating. But depending on what landowners come on board and what each individual landowner agrees to, there could be some modifications approach. Um, for instance, if there's large trees on a property that a property owner wants to keep, we would grade around that. So that could um, uh, change the price.
Okay. Is that, yeah, the only concern is obviously we don't know what we're gonna be committing to on the construction side of things, um, but I guess we would find that out. With the feasibility, it's a little disappointing Lancaster township's not participating as a, a budding municipality. I guess from an MS four credit perspective, if we've helped fund it, we should probably get all the MS four credits then away. We have to have a discussion with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works. Um, the other way to look at this, and again, I, I realize that you're looking for a direct return. Um, I think there's also benefit. While that's a very nice park, we've actually held some of our board meetings there and really enjoy meeting in the pavilion there. But there's um, there's actually ten feet of legacy sediment here. And um, the banks are actually six feet high. So there's through freeze and thaw action, there's quite a bit of erosion there. And the other problem is there's really not very good access to the creek itself. Uh, that's one thing. I know a lot of the landowners are interested in uh, having that regraded, have better access to the, to the creek. So that's one benefit. I could see the township um, getting better creek access and aesthetically it will be more pleasing and also be a more stable ecosystem.
So I have to confess, I didn't bring my thumb drive that had all the files on it for the meeting, but is, is the project going to involve removing sediment from the stream beds, sort of like what they did on Brubaker Run?
Not so much the stream bed, but the stream banks.
Well, the banks, yes, that's what I meant.
The difference with Lime Spring was they actually um, so option one A would be to remove the grade controls in the project area and actually lower um, the um, the stream bed. In this case, it's still gonna be perched above the existing historic um, stream bed. So it's just grading the banks.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if I was clear on how, how I explained that, but.
I remember a couple of years ago, someone from Jackson Drive contacted me about trying to do a flood study. They had to buy flood insurance and there's really nothing that they, that I or that they could really do. I'm wondering if, you know, if, if there's taking sediment out of the, the water course, if that would help some of those homeowners get lower flood insurance or maybe even eliminate it. So there could be another benefit, which would be a huge benefit to the landowners.
Yeah.
But it's not definite, but it would be possible.
That, that's our thought. We, we haven't able to quantify that, but the thought is when you typically, if you remove that legacy sediment from the floodplain, you're, you're creating a little more storage because you're creating those wetland benches, so.
Fortunately, we don't really have time to, to dig into that, I don't think, but what we need this, the grant needs to be applied for in June or July, I forget.
Uh, it's the end of June.
End of June, so that.
All right, so it's something we gotta take action on tonight. I mean, it's, it's a feasibility study, so the, the financial commitment's not big at this point.
Well, the grant is, so the feasibility study's been completed. What we're seeking the grant for is for design.
That's what I meant, yes, for design. Yeah, we're not, we're not in the construction phase. That's what I was trying to get, so, so.
Yeah, construction will come later.
If we take the first step, we'll probably be a little more locked into the second step, but I mean, generally I'm in favor of it because it just seems like a win-win.
I'm, I'm generally in favor of stream bank stabilization, but not S L A floodplain restoration. Like, it's nice when Brubaker Run's being tied into stormwater management and other things for a developer, but that's not the best dollars for a municipality where stream bank stabilization is actually a pretty cost-effective thing to do. So I would be supportive of going down that road. So what's the will of the board at this point?
This is gonna uh, require a fifteen K commitment outside. Well, we're, I'm okay with it.
I mean, you guys, we appreciate, it's all volunteer-driven. This is, this is a, a good thing that you guys are trying to do, so.
We appreciate, we appreciate that, thanks.
So any discussion from, and board members before, or perhaps the audience?
I'm just curious, are you working with the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation?
So we're going to be meeting with them tomorrow, actually, via Zoom to coordinate. And interestingly enough, I also received an email from a group that's working north of the Little Conestoga Trail or the Blue Green Corridor, which is the, so this is actually a pretty exciting opportunity to, to have quite a pretty extensive stretch of stream restored. Now, the difference between our project and what the foundation is doing is we're not including a trail with our project.
Are they still including a trail?
Yes, yes.
The reason for that is there's really not owner support for that.
Right.
What we'd be willing to look at would be, there is an extensive, as you know, extensive trail system in Wheatland Hills Park, which terminates at Woodbine Boulevard. So there, I think there could be some potential for on, on-road connections to get down to Columbia Avenue. But as part of the scope of this project, we're not.
Okay.
Is it correct that Lancaster Township hasn't really shown interest?
No, actually, they've shown quite a bit of interest. One of their reservations, they are, their, their MS4 PRP report, I think, is being reevaluated, and they're not sure where they stand credit-wise. So if they could, if we, they could document that they need the credits, they, they might commit to this. But, but they've been very supportive providing a support letter and also, you know, they said they'll work cooperatively with, with us as far as the planning.
Any more discussion on the board at this point? Anybody from the audience? Ms. Garber, anybody on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Well, then I will make a motion to, let's see here, we're going to need to do two. So first, the landowner commitment, motion to authorize manager to sign the landowner letter of commitment for the Jackson and River Drives Restoration Project Growing Greener Submission. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Weaver. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it for nothing. Next is a letter of support, motion to authorize manager to sign the letter of support as present and present pledging a 15% towards required 15% matching funds for the Growing Greener grant submission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it. Thank you for all your service and work.
Thank you very much for your generosity and support. We appreciate it. We'll keep you updated.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next we have the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation. Ms. Switzer.
So the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, the memo I had sent you, I did make edits to it. I later found out that it wasn't what I had envisioned. What this is, is the same Growing Greener Grant application submission. They are submitting the grant for $940,000 to cover the entire corridor's engineering fees to design. You see the corridor on your map or on the screen above you there. It's the Blue Green Corridor. Basically runs from Marietta Avenue to Harrisburg Pike with restoration and a trail. This greener, Growing Greener Grant is only for engineering of the stream, not the trail. So again, it needs to be submitted by the 22nd, and the foundation is covering the 15%.
So I did have a quick question. On the letter that I'm, I'm seeing, it says no trail work?
That's correct.
That's confusing me.
As part of, as part of the grant, as part of the Growing Greener Grant application.
It's covering the stream portion.
Got you. So the grant is just for the stream work, but their overall scope does include?
Still includes the trail, yes.
All right. Is there some concerns right now on the trail side, what we've been hearing with a couple of the property owners at this point?
Mr. Schultz has not indicated that there's any issues now with the trail.
Heard there might be some questions from some property owners. It might be.
I'll ask him. Yeah. And the bottom of that explains the status of the memorandum of understanding. That's been worked on for the past several months, and it just reviews the status of the municipalities involved in this. Lancaster Township is doing a project with the Stymon Foundation regarding the trailhead, and that's their contribution. Lancaster City fully supports the project and is contributing 75,000. Manheim Township is reconsidering their position and are looking at potentially contributing the 75,000. And Eastham Field has added the 75,000 to their 2021 budget. So all indicators that everybody seems to be on board. So the MOU needs to be ratified and modified a bit to reflect the Manheim Township contribution. So that was the starting point. And it's also important to note that they have been awarded a grant of $440,000 through DEP, through Lancaster County. So they are very excited and feel that they're very much on their way.
This is, this is good news for us, so. And they're not, they're not asking for any commitment at this point with this one. It's just.
No, just a landowner commitment to access the Shriner Station land.
So we have three of the four municipalities are on board, and Manheim Township is reconsidering about whether they want to jump on the train or not at this point.
Right.
Discussion of the board. That's what our MS4 working group have to say about this one. This is more along the lines of the bigger project, the floodplain restoration, and all the stuff that we've seen before, not what we were just talking about a moment ago.
I think it's also a good idea, and this, I think it's great. Nice if Manheim Township comes along for the ride. But we, three out of the four of us are doing our part. I might help get them off, off the Hofdeed Center or whatever.
I'm in favor of the design. Again, I think down the road, further commitment.
You need to know what the cost is, right? The design's not the big cost in this one. This is the construction cost and how it gets funded is going to be the more expensive part of the project. And that's, that has been Mr. Fevers' concern from day one, so.
And the 75K that we've committed in our budget is for design.
It's for design and permitting right now.
Do you think they'll need it? I mean, we're looking at 440 plus another 900,000. I mean, do they, do they have a budget?
I haven't seen the budget.
There had been, there was a preliminary budget of about 15 million or something.
That was their original thought.
For the construction cost, yeah.
Right. Yeah. But I'm sure that they fine-tuned that a bit since then.
This might be what, 10% of that?
It's environmental permitting, so actually it's 110%.
It's neither here nor there, but that's our commitment. I'm okay with it.
Well, this one is not a financial commitment, so this is just a letter of support kind of continuing down the road that we, we start at this point. We know from the floodplain restoration work that we've done, it's actually helped us with our MS4 credits considerably, and it's allowed us to do our part that we need to be doing for stormwater. So, and this is another step that can build us another five-year worth of credits for permitting. So it's a good thing. We don't, most, a lot of the municipalities don't have these options, and we're having people give us projects. This one has a little money attached to it, but we can given projects to address our MS4 issues. That's a, that's a good thing.
We've got a great track record in the township when it comes to these things, and that's why people come to us, I believe.
We are a very environmentally friendly township. So with that, is there anybody on the audience that wants to talk about this one? Seeing none, Ms. Garber, anybody online? Seeing a shake, no. Then I will entertain a motion to authorize the manager to sign a landowner letter of commitment for the Little Conestoga Blue Green Corridor Project Growing Greener Grant Submission. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bennett, second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
I, the eyes have it for nothing.
Thank you. Next one, I'm turning over to Diane.
Okay. Next, we have the Susquehanna Valley EMS Conversion to Penn State Health Lifeline LLC Agreement. Ms. Garber.
All right. So before you this evening, you have an agreement provided to us by Penn State Health Lifeline LLC. This is an agreement that we, as a township, need to sign to move, to allow Penn State Lifeline EMS to take over the coverage of what was previously or will previously have been Susquehanna Valley EMS. They are in the midst of a business consolidation, which will take place on August 1st. That is the one change to the agreement that staff would recommend you make. We were not aware until today that the change of our date has been pushed back from July 1 to August 1. Other than that, the agreement that's before you was provided to us by Penn State. It has been reviewed by our solicitor as well as solicitors from multiple other municipalities that are currently served by Susquehanna Valley EMS, including but not limited to Raffa Township and Westhamfield Township. At this time, it does appear that the other municipalities are moving forward with this agreement. Our solicitor has, along with Westhamfield Township Solicitor, gone back and forth with their legal counsel on this, and changes have been made before you as the final copy that both the solicitor and staff are comfortable with. As far as the agreement itself goes, there is background information. It is a five-year agreement to recognize Penn State Health Lifeline EMS as a provider of both BLS and ALS services within the township, taking over what was previously the service provided by Susquehanna Valley EMS. I did speak with Scott Beakley this afternoon. He is on Zoom with us this evening. He is the director of Penn State Health Lifeline EMS and is able to take any questions or provide any comment that you would like. The agreement itself indicates that we will designate Penn State Health Lifeline EMS as a primary EMS service moving forward. And that indicates their provisions, including equivalent services as are being provided now. They are aware of some of the concerns within the emergency services community around the current provision of EMS services and working on those moving forward. They also, of course, have contingencies built in for the addition of the hospital to their primary service area and additional services that may be provided at a later time when that hospital is completed. So at this time, with the one change noted of the date in Agreement Section 1 term, that the start of service would be August 1 instead of July 1, staff would recommend that the board consider signing the ground ambulance transportation agreement for Eastham Field Township with Penn State Lifeline, Penn State Health Lifeline EMS.
Thank you, Ms. Garber. Well, first off, just a big thank you to Mike Fitzgivens for his years of running Susquehanna Valley EMS, and I know this is his retirement plan that's coming into effect with this transfer. And he's been a selfless service servant to the township and used to do Diane's job as a volunteer. So Mike has been a true servant to the township over the years of providing EMS services. We also knew that Susquehanna Valley EMS was being stressed financially, and that if they were acquired by Penn State, this would be a good solution to their financial situation and good solution for long-term for EMS for the township. So this is in many ways a good thing that Penn State has taken this on with their Lifeline program. And I view this as nothing but a positive at this point. Any other discussions of the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to authorize a signature on the ground ambulance service provider agreement as amended tonight between the township and Penn State Health Lifeline LLC. So I hear a motion. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second by Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it for nothing. Thank you, and thanks to Penn State, and thank you to Mr. Fitzgivens. Thanks. Next up, we have the Dairy Road Bridge Replacement Resolution 21, 2021-29, authorizing the submission of a multimodal transportation grant application for the replacement. And this is on our Bridge Capital Project Plan Replacement List. Ms. Switzer.
So you have a resolution that it would allow us to submit the MTF grant, I guess that's what it's called, multimodal grant to the state. This is a $1.3 million ask. The match on this to the township, if we are awarded, would be 400,000. It is on our, our bridge replacement program. The bridge will be replaced while still maintaining access to Dairy Road, which is probably what contributes to the higher cost.
Because it's a landlocked road without the bridge.
Yes, yes. This will take us years to accomplish. This is not an immediate project, but it's the start of gathering the funding necessary to get this accomplished.
So any discussion of the board? This is one of the bridges we have identified for replacement.
Yes.
It is a critical bridge, given that it is the only way, is the only access in and out for Dairy Road. So it's a bridge that we can't let fail, and there are a number of trucks that utilize that road. So anybody from the audience? Seeing none. I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-29, authorizing the submission of a CFA multimodal transportation grant application for replacement of the Dairy Road Bridge. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Weaver. Do I hear a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
The eyes have it for nothing. Next up, we have the zoning hearing board appointment alternate Resolution 2021-30, ratifying the appointment of Dennis Geringer as the alternate to the zoning hearing board with a term expiring in January 2024. Ms. Switzer.
We actually made this motion at the last meeting, but we did not do a resolution, which is required under the MPC for zoning hearing board appointment. So this is just ratifying your decision from last meeting.
Okay. Any discussion of the board on this one?
Could I ask two quick questions about zoning hearing board? Number one, zoning hearing board meets on a regularly scheduled day each month, correct?
When they have hearings, yes.
When, when they have, they don't, they don't always have a hearing on that day, I understand.
That is correct. It's the third Monday of the month.
Third Monday of the month, okay. And number two, we'll, we'll have two alternates on the board. I assume the chairman of the board will select the alternate, one of the two, when necessary. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-30, ratifying the appointment to Dennis Geringer as the alternate to the zoning hearing board with a term expiring in January 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bennett. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it for nothing. So that ends our action items. We have no old business showing up on the agenda right now, none that I'm aware of. No new business unless some board member wants to bring something up. Okay, seeing none. Traffic Commission report, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, we had a traffic commission meeting this evening, the highlights of which were, number one, the presentation of a neighborhood traffic management program, traffic calming for the neighborhood that we'd like to see established. It's, it's a formal plan of action, lays out the priorities, lays out the issues, and lays out the responses. I've asked that. I've asked that, we asked that the recommendation, the report, be submitted to our traffic engineer for review. And I also asked that each board member gets a copy of it, because I think it's a great plan. The chief put this together with the help of some of his friends at Mannheim Township. And I think it's exactly what we need in the township as far as a professional way to approach our traffic issues. That said, we also had a, the chief put together a new report that will detail all of the traffic issues that we have in the township, where we are with each issue, and what action is being taken on each issue. And then finally, we also reviewed the electronic speed monitoring and traffic control devices that we have in the township. We're reviewing the condition and utility of each one of those. And again, this is a project that's going to push out here for another month or two. But we have, I'm concerned, as a member of the Traffic Commission, been concerned that we're not addressing the speed monitoring in a timely fashion for the residents of the community. So I think we've got a good idea of, you know, what the issues are. And I think moving forward, we're going to be much more effective and efficient with our traffic counts and speed monitoring. That's it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Next, we'll move on to Development Service Project Report, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The special exception conditional use amendment and the signed amendment are moving forward and are very close to getting ready to bring to the board. With that being said, I'll be reaching out to the members of the planning group to schedule a meeting within the next week to go over that, to go over those amendments and a few other projects that have come to to the level of requiring some input and guidance from the planning group. Moving on to the subdivision land development projects and stormwater projects, I'll highlight the big ones, 701 Stony Battery Road. The plans and agreements have been recorded, and the permit was issued. They are moving, moving full steam ahead. I even talked to them today. They're looking to get their first inspections done tomorrow. Traditions of America, we're waiting on them to record the plans. The last I heard it, they're still waiting on East Petersburg Borough to sign off on, to grant approval of their plans. But the board approved.
Not the 701, but the 791 that we just jumped over. That's the one right now that's in, they're just starting to push dirt at this point, right? The one that's in between?
Correct, 701 is in between the one that's built and the one that, that is adjacent to Nolte Road.
That one, the other week when we had that storm event, there really needs to be some temporary storm control measures that come up a couple of days ago when that rain occurred. There was some serious flooding on Stony Battery.
Understood.
I know it won't be the case once they get the basin in place, but there's nothing right now at this point. So it kind of, it did cause some flooding in a place that had not been flooding before.
Okay.
So just some comments that came back to me.
Okay. Understood. Duckling's Daycare building permit was approved. The board tonight granted a recording time extension for the Farmstead Revised Land Development Plan and Law Consolidation Plan. Next month, at the July 21st meeting, the board will have a hearing for the Lime Spring Square rezoning. And the board approved the condition, or the conditional use for the billboard at 1600 Cloister Drive tonight. Mavis Discount Tire, their plan is put on hold because they had to apply to the zoning hearing board for some screening and buffering relief. And Belco Community Credit Union, their sketch plan for the vacant lot next to that fish place was approved by the board last month. And the board approved the land development waiver for the Sheetz store number 338 at the corner of Columbia and Centerville tonight. And that concludes my report.
Let's see the status on the trail on Stony Battery now that we have all three properties developing at this point. Do we have an update on that?
701, they're going to be installing the trail as part of their project. And the staff is working on getting the documents together to call in the deferrals for 601 and the self-storage place. Actually, talking to the developers of 701, they're planning on selling it to the same people that own 601 now. So there's some timing there that would provide some economies of scale.
Yeah, but the gap, the gap that exists from the, the storage place and, and the, before we get to Kaufman, that little section on Stony Battery. What's, how, have we figured out how we're going to fix that part of the gap?
No, we're still looking at that.
Thanks, that's all I have. Anything else? Okay, Ms. Switzer?
So you have an abbreviated report, fairly short, since I was away for a few days. I do want to point out that Old Warriors Town Road Bridge, it seems like PPNL has finally given us what we need, and we can continue moving on. So that should start, that project should start moving forward a little quicker than it has been. Farmingdale Road, we're still waiting for the HOP permit, but we do have a kickoff meeting scheduled in, I believe, early July with the state to talk about the grant application, or not the application, the grant agreement. We spoke about Dairy Road. We spoke about Nate Sturgis, who's our zoning officer. We do have two vacancies currently. We have a public works vacancy that's going to be opening at the end of June. Robert Knoll is retiring. So we have that advertised as also a part-time administrative assistant for the planning department is being advertised. I did have a Walkworks Grant Meeting today, which is the active transportation study being done on in the Harrisburg Pike Corridor. We reviewed the survey results that were online and the businesses that we, Joel and Warren and a resident actually went out to the businesses and surveyed them as well. So we reviewed those results, and DMA will come back and compile recommendations based on those survey results and based on the committee discussions. You should hear a formal presentation at your meeting in July. And we want, hope to finalize that sometime in August to comply with the grant requirements. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for the manager?
Under board groups, I just, I had a quick question about the golf authority or the golf course. Are we doing anything with the range? Do you know, is there any plans or is that on the radar?
Yeah, the range is on the radar as a objective to deal with. You know, we're discussing whether we should keep it or not. It's, it's not a very good driving range. But that is one of the goals and objectives that we have for the coming year, is to resolve that issue. It's not, it's not being utilized party at all. So we'll see what happens. But it is, it will be on our agenda next week at our, I believe, at our meeting next week. It'll be one of the topics of discussion.
Great.
Okay.
In terms of a golf course, I can tell you too that the HVAC units have been installed on the rooftops. So they're all up. Hopefully, they have air conditioning today, I'm not sure. That was the goal, is to have them turned on today. The goal of the restaurant is opening July 1st, is their hope now.
They have any outings before the Elcat's outing at this point? Does there?
They actually had one mid-May, so this is not their first one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussions of the board? Okay. Seeing none, we will now move on to public comments. So is anybody here that wishes to offer a public comment? Just come on forward, and we know who you are, but you got to state your name. Yeah. Oh, we appreciate the comment. And we, we do like seeing the park full. And over the last couple, especially over the last year, it really picked up when people kind of do outdoor activities, and that was it. It hasn't died down since then, though. It's been pretty amazing, the walking trail, I think, has really added to people participating in their. I know when my son plays baseball, my wife and I walk around the trail while he practices. So it's, it's just a nice little outlet of activity, so appreciate the comments. Anything else for public comment? Ms. Garber, is anybody online?
There's no public left online.
Okay, I could kind of see that stuff. Okay, so seeing no more public comments, it is now 8:20, and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Say that's one of the quickest meetings we've had in a while. Chief, how's life treating you?
Thank you.